We're a hybrid environment. You can change in the cloud. So my password on my phone.
If it is now, you might not be able to see it.
On my phone key?
Yeah.
Well, this is my first one.
Okay, well.
Okay, I'll get things sent in.
That was the thirty days. So it was the termination clause, like a change from thirty days to annual, however. Or just not having it in there, whatever you say. That was one you had in mind. I agreed, I agree with you on that. That was the one that I had wanted. The other one was the delay in sort of they came, so I do this for thirty days. So they can't use our same presentation to this in the sense of, oh, forty days. Like they say they postponed something or whatever. Then he was doing like it was way if they was doing that they can't because they can't intentionally delay something.
Oh.
That was the, it was kind of that thing. So they, we gave them a time, but there was nothing left to be done. And whether that's thirty days or whatever it is, just, yeah, that was the part that I wanted. And like, I don't know if we want to go back to being that or should they be reviewing the red line version?
Okay.
So just more discussion for that one. Yeah, so that was the thirty day.
Okay, okay. I don't know if you've heard that. She's focused on this, we'll talk later.
We got, we got these stuff all the way around in here.
Yeah, they're all, uh, there's people out today, so. All right. We're ready? All right. Good morning, everybody. Uh, we're gonna call the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the March twenty-sixth special meeting to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Zenger.
Ready, begin.
Apply allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall it for religious sins, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have acknowledged a certificate of posting. Can we entertain a motion for approval?
So move.
We are first and the second.
Second.
All who are in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. So we have one item on the agenda today. This is discuss fire protection services and provide staff direction. Uh, there's an attachment for Prop one seventy-two and then the City of Hollister agenda from three, uh, March twenty-fourth. Interim CEO Ring, do you, do you want to say anything? Provide any updates, um, from the county perspective on, uh, what's occurred in the last several days?
Sure. Um, good morning, Chair, members of the board, Henny Ring. Um, so last week, there were several special meetings that started off. Um, we had one on Tuesday, the, in front of me, this, what was the seventeenth, I think? And then we turned around and had one on the nineteenth. And also in unison, the City of Hollister had a special meeting, um, on Friday, the twenty-first. Um, the, um, proposal, the First Amendment draft that we, uh, that board came up to on the nineteenth, was brought back to the, uh, City of Hollister on the twenty-first. The City of Hollister Council has since rejected that, um, draft amendment that we had, which included, um, the one point one million. And also, um, had the red line strikeout with the, um, for the brownout for Station Three. Um, that proposal has since been rejected. Um, hence, since then, we have scheduled the special meeting today to discuss fire services, within San Benito County and for this, uh, board to provide any direction to us.
Thank you, and I put you on the spot.
No, no, that's okay.
Just, just clarification on the dates, the seventeenth, um, Hollister City Council approved the, in principle, to bring it back for further consideration. Then the eighteenth, we did our special meeting in the, uh, eighteenth, San Juan Batista did their meeting where they, uh, rejected the contract. And then we came back on the twentieth, um, for, uh, approval and, uh, with the one amendment. And then, um, Hollister City Council, uh, met on Friday. And is there any further explanation we need from the Hollister side? They just essentially, just for public transparency, they just essentially rejected the agreement and issued a?
Yes, so we received, um, yesterday, the March twenty-fifth, we received the termination notice, the two hundred seventy-day notice from the City of Hollister. What they have put in together is that the City of Hollister's Fire Services Contract Negotiations Adcock Committee in consult, um, was in consultation with their, uh, Hollister Fire Chief, their Hollister Firefighters Association Local Thirty-three ninety-five President and City Management, will be prepared, will be, will prepare a proposal allowing for adequate distribution of costs in uninterrupted fire protection services in the unincorporated areas of San Benito County and the City of San Juan Batista. Uh, their proposal will be presented to the City, um, Council as of April seventh of, um, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. If it's approved, the City of Hollister will prepare a joint proposal to the County of San Benito and the City of San Juan for consideration. That's the letter that you received. You also received a copy of that, I emailed that to the board. So that's their proposal.
And City Manager Marioni, I don't know if you want to just give, is that adequate as far as explanation? Anything further from the city side? Um, San Juan Batista, just want to make sure everything's accurate from San Juan's side. Um, and we called this meeting obviously because of, uh, timeliness and, um, the decision that was made Monday night by the Hollister City Council. So that's essentially it in a nutshell, to have discussion and give direction on, um, next steps from the county side. And, um, does the board, uh, is the board okay going to public comment and then coming back for discussion, direction?
Either we get that Prop one seventy-two information before or after, it's up to the?
Yeah, we could certainly, do we want to do that now? I know we talked, you added that to, just because there were some questions about Prop one seventy-two funding that was part of the discussion. Uh, as far as funding goes, I, I think that our consultants are?
Yes.
Are they available?
Yeah, so for logistics, Bill Adams, who is our attorney or counsel for, um, our fire services is online as well as Don Ashton from MRG, which is our fire consultant. And I, we don't see them on the screen, but I'm, is Don available? Um, okay. Um, Don, if you're okay, could you go ahead and present your slides?
Yes, absolutely, Henny, and good morning, supervisors. I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Henny, are you able to pull up the PowerPoint or do I need to do it on my end?
No, we're doing it right now, we've got it up.
Thank you. Okay. So we felt it was, would be beneficial for the board, but also for the public to have an understanding of Prop one seventy-two and recognizing the, the legal and legislative intent of Prop one seventy-two, but also aware of the, the political reality when talking about Prop one seventy-two. This, this conversation comes up in just about every jurisdiction I'm aware of. When it, when we start talking about funding for fire or police or any public safety service. So just a few slides, and if you have any questions, I guess just as we go, just, the best way is just interrupt me as we go because I'm not sure I'll be able to see hands raised or anything. So Prop one seventy-two, it's a half-cent sales tax that was passed by the voters in California. And it legally, per the government code, is required to be deposited into a public safety augmentation fund and then allocated by the county auditor to the counties and cities within the county. So the county auditor distributes that money based on a percentage allocation that was defined back when Prop one seventy-two was passed or shortly thereafter. That being said, while the cities do get some money, the counties receive the bulk of the funding. And one more thing, it is just for the board and the public's awareness, and you are aware of this. It is a, it's discretionary as far as it relates to a public safety service. So the board can choose to spend it on everything on the sheriff or on the DA or any, everything on fire, but it has to be within the public safety scope of responsibility. The purpose of Prop one seventy-two was not necessarily to increase public safety funding, but to maintain public safety funding levels in spite of the ERAF property tax shift. So ERAF stands for the Educational Realignment Augmentation Fund. And what happened, you know, thirty, thirty-plus years ago, you know, we, for forty years, when we had Prop thirteen that was passed and limited the amount of property taxes that could be increased on homeowners. And then ERAF came along and ERAF shifted property tax money to education. The state of California felt education needed more money, so they took property tax revenues away from other local jurisdictions and gave it to education. While local jurisdictions then were feeling the hit and unable to fund some critical public safety elements for their community, so the legislature and the voters put forward a ballot, or the legislature put forward a ballot that was passed by the voters, now it was Prop one seventy-two, to backfill that loss of revenue that local government faced because of ERAF. And just, I do have the source link on this slide. These words aren't my words, these are words from the State Controller's Office. And there's a fact sheet there that anyone can go and, and find. The third bullet, counties were the primary losers under ERAF. Um, and as a result, were the primary recipients of Prop one seventy-two money. That makes sense because counties historically get significantly more of the property tax share than other cities or, uh, special districts or things, or other local government agencies. Fire and police special districts do not receive Prop one seventy-two funding because they are virtually, virtually exempt from the ERAF shift. So no money goes directly, if you had a, well, San Benito has talked about creating a, a fire district. If you create, if that fire district, district is created, they won't get Prop one seventy-two funding directly to fund it. That would be a discretionary allocation made by, by the Board of Supervisors. Uh, Prop one seventy-two funds go to many cities and some counties that don't provide or fund fire service. Again, that's a local decision of the, the Board of Supervisors and the cities who receive it as well. And I, I think I previously stated, previously stated, it's to mitigate the impacts of ERAF on public safety, but not just fire and regardless of what specific levels of service or responsibility a particular agency might have. Then there was a Phase Two ERAF that did not affect cities. And they got no Prop thirteen ABA benefit. That, that's a lot of stuff in there, Prop thirteen ABA. But the, the gist of this point, there's, there was an ERAF one and ERAF two. ERAF two did not impact, it significantly, it really impacted only counties. And that's another reason why they get, uh, most of the share of one seventy-two. And then Prop one seventy funds, Prop one seventy-two funds are allocated on a monthly basis based on statewide sales tax revenue. So I've heard some people say, and I've not heard this in San Benito, but I've heard some people from the public and other jurisdictions say, they think Prop one seventy-two is this big bucket of money that the county knows what it's getting each year and then can divvy it up how you get it, and that's simply not the case. It's a revenue source that comes in, um, on a monthly allocation, again, based on the sales tax revenue. So it fluctuates up and down and usually it's cyclical based on, um, the status of the economy. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Henny. So these are actual Prop one seventy-two revenues received by San Benito County. So these, these are the amount of revenues that should go into that public safety augmentation fund and then be distributed by your county auditor. And you'll see back in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, it was, it's on my screen, it was up over five point five million dollars, and since then it has decreased each year. That shouldn't come as a surprise, that you're, you're, we've all been, you've all been following sales tax revenues and things, so that shouldn't be a surprise that statewide, the economy has been slowing down. You've seen those reductions. Now fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, you see it goes a slight uptick. I just want to clarify, that's my projection, so that's a guess. It's, that projection was based on what you've received to date through, through your February, um, dispersment from the state of California. And then I assume that March, April, May, June would just be the same as you received last year of, for each month. And if, if, if that is the same, you'll come in slightly higher this year than you did last, last year, but that isn't unknown. We, we don't know, so just use that number with caution. But the, the purpose of this slide was to show the trend that that revenue has been decreasing for the last, at least the last three years. Okay, and next, last slide, Henny, please. So just some concluding thoughts, and I almost thought about calling this slide a best practice slide or, but I don't know if that's necessarily the case, it would depend on each community. But there are some jurisdictions that adopt a, a board policy that identifies by percentage how Prop one seventy-two funds are allocated through the budget process. So they'll say X percent goes to the sheriff, X percent goes to the district attorney, X percent goes to fire. And one of the reasons that's helpful is because then everyone knows. And your CAO and your budget team know how to allocate those funds, but, um, each year in the budget process. Prop one seventy-two revenues are dependent on statewide sales tax revenue. And as a result, they fluctuate up and down each year. And because they fluctuate, you may have to adjust service levels to, to address those fluctuations, especially if they are decreasing. Any change to a Prop one seventy-two allocation methodology will result in reductions to other public safety departments. So another way of saying this is that Prop one seventy-two money is a closed system. If you want to take money and shift more to fire or more to the sheriff or more to the district attorney or wherever you want to go, it's being taken from one of those other jurisdictions. So if you want to give more relevant to San Benito in this discussion, if there was a desire to give Prop one seventy-two money to additional funds to support fire service, that money would be coming from, be taken from your sheriff, your DA, wherever you send those Prop one seventy-two funds in your budget. And then you'd have a decision to make, do you cut services in those departments? Do you backfill that money with other discretionary revenues the board has? Or, or do they, do, do those departments have to, have to cut, cut service? Again, those are policy decisions the county would have to figure out. And that gets into the next bullet there, San, San Benito County, you must decide, excuse me, what level of fire service you desire and what level of service you can afford, recognizing there may be impacts in other public safety departments. And since two thousand and twenty-one, revenues have decreased. And also keep in mind, that's at a time when inflation has driven prices higher, which compounds the problem all, all jurisdictions are facing right now. So I hope, I hope that was helpful, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time.
I think, uh, if you might just hold off, unless the board wants to ask questions now, or if you're okay, we'll go to public comment and come back. So we will open up public comment, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a spirit card and on Zoom use a racehen icon feature by dialing star nine. In chambers, we have Mia Casey, you have three minutes.
That microphone, can we get a helper out there, please?
Can I get my time back? Thank you. Good morning. Regarding the Prop one seventy-two funds, there's two key points. First, you didn't address the five million dollar question. Where has the money been going each year and why isn't the allocation transparent in the county budget? The public deserves answers and an audit is needed. Second, I appreciate the info on the usage, but let's be clear, this isn't funding for a fire district or a pass-through to the city for its public safety. This is county service that the city is providing as a vendor. So every penny of Prop one seventy-two could in theory go to fire services if the board chose to. And frankly, our first responders like sheriff and fire services should be at the top of your list of one seventy-two funding. Chair Cosmiki, you politicized the termination clause last year by attacking the city and spreading fear. But let's be clear, the city isn't trying to extort the county. Hollister tried for over a year to renegotiate terms, but CAO Espinoza did not respond. The termination notice was simply a way to reopen negotiations and give nine months for the parties to reach a new deal. But even then, you refused to meet for another six months. This costs the city millions of dollars. The bottom line is Hollister can't keep subsidizing the county, it's unsustainable. Last January, four politicians went behind closed doors and shut out key people, including our fire chief. The result of this backroom dealing was unacceptable contract amendments and another three months wasted. This needs to move forward with no more delays. Supervisor Cosmiki and Velazquez, I've watched you disrespect our firefighters, insinuate the abuse over time and claim the fire budget is out of control. It's simply untrue. As far as what you should pay, let's look at tiny Aromas Tri-County Fire, which only covers eighty square miles and has a budget of around three million. Meanwhile, you're paying two point two million for fire service that covers an area fifteen times larger than Aromas. The community deserves a board that works for them and negotiates an equitable fire contract. They've spoken quite loudly, they want no cuts to firefighters, no service reduction and no more delays. The board's gonna have to rethink their priorities. Fire protection is so critical. And to be honest, it is certainly more important than the half million dollars in funding you approved yesterday to fund riverbed cleanups. If San Juan Batista is able to find a way to pay its share, I think you can too, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Next up in chambers, we have Greg Lopez. You have three minutes.
Good morning, board. My name's Greg Lopez, I live at eighteen eighty-one Memorial Drive. As a lifelong resident of San Benito County and a twenty-four-year veteran of public safety, I'm deeply concerned with, um, the current state of our, um, and the future of our county's fire and emergency services. The fact that the fire protection, um, contract has been negotiated by the ad hoc committee comprised of two city council members and two of you on this board. And the inclusion, or without the inclusion of the fire chief, managers from the City of Hollister and San Juan Batista, along with, uh, the county CAO and the firefighter union president, the fact that they were not included from the get-go is appalling, and quite frankly, it reeks of bad politics. The second concern I have is the three of you vote, uh, recently voted yes to approve a bogus contract that places our community at greater risk by allowing the reduction of firefighter staffing on a fire engine from three personnel to two, uh, all while agreeing to pay one point one million dollars more. That doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't add up and the impact has serious repercussions, not only from a service delivery standpoint, but also places our firefighters at greater risk and places them at a disadvantage, um, to be able to perform their duties. No, and it also violates their memorandum of understanding regarding staffing levels. So I think all of that needs to be better considered when it's put into writing. I will also say shame on the City of Hollister for issuing the two hundred and seventy-day notice and trying to strong-arm this board into making a decision and vote on a contract that is not, it's not feasible and it's not safe. The Chicago politics that are being played with our community's safety and the safety of our firefighters needs to stop. All elected parties should be back to the table as soon as possible to work to come up with a better solution rather than issuing ultimatums. The community expects and deserves better than this. And the very firefighters you see in this room that answer the call every day for service in this community definitely deserve better. After all, they don't have a choice in throwing in the towel when things get difficult, or they don't like the emergencies they respond to. They simply answer the call, face the challenges and come up with positive solutions. I urge each of you to consider doing the same. Stand up to the city council, form a real ad hoc committee and vote for what is right. I would also add that the politics being played in this between the city and the county are not gaining the public's confidence if and when it comes time to vote for a fire district. So I ask each of you to listen to your constituents and get this matter resolved for the sake of everyone's public safety. Thank you for your time.
Next in chambers, we have Elias Linus. You may now approach the podium, you have three minutes.
Thank you. So what the two supervisors and the two council members from the City of Hollister turned this into a total cluster. That's what you did. You refused, you think you're smarter than everybody else and you refuse to allow the experts to come to the table. Up until February of this year, you, uh, San Benito County has received two point seven million dollars. Where is the money going? You're clumping it into and you're not making any direct, uh, notations that this money from Prop one seventy-two is coming in and you're not saying where it's going. You're lumping it. You need to do an audit, where is this money going? How do the, how does it, can you confirm to the public that San Benito County is not taking one, Prop one seventy-two money and putting it into the general fund and illegally spending it? That is your responsibility, you are the stewards of that money, and you need to find out where that money is going to. The district attorney has seventeen attorneys compared to the public defender's office that they have maybe four or five attorneys. So you, there's going to have to be some way where that money is going to be allocated and it has to be allocated to the fire department. These folks are the ones that go out there and without wanting to will see brain matter scattered about. And then they have to go home and they have to go to their families still with that vision. And you, both you Supervisor Cosmiki and Velazquez have the audacity to disrespect those people. These are the folks that are gonna come to you, to your first aid, no matter who you are, even if you continue to disrespect them. You need to go back to the table, you need to invite all the stakeholders to this. You need to bring the people that are the experts because you are not the experts. The city mayor asked the question, what did it cost for a firefighter? What is the mayor doing at a negotiations for a contract when she doesn't even know what it costs to run a fire department? Both of you do not know how to run a fire department. That is why you needed to have the chief there and you needed to have the CAO and you needed to have the city managers. Shame on CAO Espinoza. While he still continues to get twenty-five thousand dollars a month from this county and you cover up for him, and this is what it's turned into, a total cluster and you need to clean it up.
On Zoom, we have Carol Lenore. You have now been unmuted, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I just want to start with an official apology for my outburst when I was in chambers last meeting. It wasn't terrible, but it certainly was something I didn't really like that I did. So Chairman Cosmiki, my apologies to you and the board. And next time I come, I will mind my Ps and Qs. So I just want to move on and talk about that timeliness issue that could have been avoided had the boards stepped up and negotiated with the city when they asked on that termination notice. The termination notice was just trying to get you to the table, because for six months, you wouldn't come to the table. I mean, everybody knows you canceled meetings, so there really wasn't an option. You still didn't react when the time was removed. You're just fighting it all away. But I was hoping to speak after I heard what y'all had to say, because when you make the speaker speak before I've had a chance to hear what you have to say and the rest of the members have to say about Prop 172, I'm not exactly sure what to comment there, except to say I agree with the previous speakers that it really should have been, and I know there's the county folks on there that have experience, that it really should have been kept to the side and tracked where the money went. And that's what it was for. Fire? Did it go to fires? I'm waiting to hear what you say about that. Again, the city council has sent notice that they just want you to come back and be more fair to the city of Hollister. Nobody's twisting your arm. The fact that we even have to do this is bad, because you didn't come to the table. I know you respect firefighters. People are always telling you that. I know you do, and I know it's expensive, but you can't keep all the fire money and expect the city to pay the bill. Have a nice day. Thank you very much.
This concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the board for questions and comments. Would offer the two supervisors that were opposed to the agreement. If either of you want to start, feel free. But otherwise, we can go down the line.
I'm kind of curious, today's meeting. Can you tell me a little bit, I mean, I read the agenda. We're gonna give staff direction. I thought we gave direction at the prior meeting. So I'm still trying to figure out, are you trying to get from us what we're looking for? I said it at the last meeting. I don't think we should have two in our contract on an engine. It should be three. It should match the firefighter's memorandum of understanding or their contract, their union contract. I don't agree with the brownouts at Station 3. It will jeopardize our response times, which are already horrific going down to the Colingas or Colinga and South County areas. I think that negotiations should be happening between the ad hoc of the county and the ad hoc of the city of Hollister and the ad hoc of San Juan Batista with the fire chief and the city managers present. And really talking about the challenges of the fact that we do know we don't have very much money. But at the same time, Prop 172, it clearly sounded like from the presentation today, that should have been put into a separate trust account that should be allocated by this body, which I don't think has ever been done. At least, I've never seen any allocation from this body or any prior bodies. We know these are tough decisions for life safety, but if we don't take the cancellation of fire protection seriously in the unincorporated area, the financial ramifications on our residents are gonna be huge. It's gonna be, you know, insurance is ultimately going to be greatly affected, more than it is right now. So I'm open to having a dialogue about reprioritizing the allocations of some of our current funding. I am gonna say that it's not gonna be very popular, but I'd rather have fire protection than have, you know, a mile of road repaired. If it's a million dollars a mile, how many miles are we gonna have to take away from the budget to be able to allocate towards fire protection? I mean, that's where I'm at right now. I'm open to ideas on it. I do definitely feel we need to have the allocations of Prop 172 funding needs to be separated from any, if it is separated, then show us where it's been allocated to each of the life safety departments. I know we have to take from somewhere, but we need to start having the conversation about where are we gonna take from? The other thing is, is I've already heard in our budget impacts that OPEB, which is our long-term funding for retirees, is taking a big increase, you know, over a million dollars, when last year we were overfunded. I really think we need to look at the board policy on OPEB. And are we overfunding OPEB? It's a conversation that keeps coming back year after year, but we don't look at what was the policy in the past and have we fulfilled the policy so that we can lessen how much is going into OPEB? Also, the CFD, I believe it's a CFD. I don't think it's a CSA, the 218. The one that we keep putting money in according to the annexations that are happening for all these new properties that are for funding, you know, my understanding, it's the sheriff's department, it's fire, it's the essential safety services. Where are we on that account, and how can we look at that? I don't want to take anything off the table, because I do believe if we do cut fire, we will have impacts and ramifications that will financially hurt our residents in the long run way more than a pothole. But that's my summary.
Thank you, Supervisor. And there were a couple of questions asked. I'll just, I did ask, just emailed Henny previously on just getting clarification on the Prop 172 breakdown. So if that's something that can be provided to the board and to the public.
Yes, we can provide that. So I'd like to introduce Dulce Alonso. She is actually our, better time than ever to announce, she's our new budget officer for the county. So she has the information, the breakdown that she'll be able to present.
Hi. Good morning, Board. So we do receive approximately the $5 million of Prop 172, and we currently budget for it under the Division 1020, non-departmental revenues. In addition, we also have approximately $26 million of net general fund contribution to cover public safety. And that includes our sheriff's operations, corrections, district attorneys, fire, and probation. We are evaluating the current breakdown, and we'll bring a few options for the board during budget hearings. But currently, Prop 172 covers less than 20% of public safety.
Thank you, Dulce, but I think it would be helpful to get a breakdown of where specifically those dollars are going now and then heading into the budget. And the only other thing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Henny.
Yes, we can certainly give you a more detailed breakdown on that.
Okay, appreciate that. And then just, you had asked about the meeting. What changed from Thursday was, you know, we approved a contract with a slight amendment. And obviously, as Henny noted, and we all know at this point, the city of Hollister rejected that agreement and, you know, gave some directions. So the purpose was really timeliness and having a discussion about next steps and doing it in public and just giving direction to staff, essentially having an initial conversation.
I'm just confused. Are we actually gonna start talking about dollar amounts publicly while you're in negotiations? Or is that a closed session item? Because I feel a little uncomfortable in an open session when you're actually doing a contract negotiation.
Yeah, and I guess it was more just a general conversation to have today as far as your mention of negotiations. But I don't think that was the intent of.
Okay.
So do you have anything, Supervisor Sedona?
I don't have a lot more to add. I agree 100% with Supervisor Kuro. I would like to see us move toward the policy for Prop 172, kind of moving forward. I think it just makes it a cleaner process, a little more transparent for the public. I get that we are spending a lot more than we receive on public safety from Prop 172, but I just think it's a good policy moving forward. So I would like to see us move forward with that. And I guess from my point of view, I would like to see the ad hoc go back to the table and continue the negotiations. I think you've kind of heard from us, obviously, and I think you were in agreeance. We all were with this board, rejecting the brownout and keeping the staffing at three, not going back to two. I get that there's going to be a shift in what we are going to owe for that. I also am open to looking at our budget. I think kind of perfect timing. We're gonna get into budget starting right away. And so I think all things, we need to be looking at everything. We have a responsibility to keep this community safe. And so I'd like to, you know, kind of dig our heels in and do whatever we can to make this work and negotiate and be inclusive of the community, really open up the dialogue there. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And Supervisor Velazquez, you were on the ad hoc with myself. I don't know if you want to go next?
Yeah, I have a lot to say. You heard this comment. Let's be clear. Let's be clear. Let's be clear. But they're giving you false information, those people making those comments. Let's be honest, this problem started because the last city council, city of Hollister, led by former mayor Mia Casey, spent nearly $15 million in reserves and has put the city in serious, serious financial difficulties. How that city is gonna manage now, I don't know. But I know one thing, they're gonna have to make cuts across the board. So I'm pretty sure the city of Hollister's have to lay up quite a few people by mismanagement of people that try to confuse the public by saying, "Let's be clear, we have dollars here, we have dollars there." It's not true. All of this, all of this was predictable, and I pointed that out to all of you when this conversation first started happening. And I warned everybody, if we go down this path and something happens, a downturn, we're all gonna be in trouble. I voted no at the time. It continued. City is in deep financial trouble. They need a way out. Problem is, county's not much better off financially. Money just does not grow on trees. Those are the facts. Throwing a million dollars here, a million dollars there might seem like no big deal, but it is. Because that means we then have to start cutting from different departments. Do we really go to the sheriff's department and say, "Hey, sheriff, turns out you're not that important. We're gonna cut your budget"? Or maybe the DA's office and say, "You know, we don't need that many attorneys. Let some people go." Doesn't work that way. Comment about taking money from the roads? We'll deal with this some other time. This is exactly, exactly how we ended up with the roads that we have right now. What do bad roads cause? More accidents. You want to see a budget explode? Ignore your roads. That's what we're seeing. Roads that could have been fixed for a few hundred thousand dollars are now into the millions. It's not a game being played here. We have to be serious, and we have to be honest about numbers and what's going on. Some of these comments about, "Oh, the ad hoc was not negotiating good." No, look, we had clear, clear direction from this board. And that direction was not to spend even more money, although publicly, that's what I'm hearing today, which is very frustrating. That's politics. No, the instruction, we don't have a lot of money. We have to keep it as tight as possible. Here's the parameters. Guess what we came back with? Exactly that. Now, let me make this clear too, since we're talking about, let's be clear. I don't blame the city of Hollister for rejecting the deal in the end. What would you do? You have a city council that unanimously rejects a deal that is valued at several million dollars while they're paying $400,000 in the hopes that another million dollars will be provided in services? Who's gonna pay for that? You have a board up here that say one thing and then reject it, and now want to spend another million dollars we don't have? Who's gonna pay for it? We need to stop playing games with this. We need to find a way that makes this work for everybody. As I said way back in 2013, we stick together, we can make it work. If we don't, it's gonna fail for everybody. It is failing. That's the reality. You can change it all in every way you want, but that's the reality. City of Hollister's in deep financial trouble. County's right behind. And I'll be damned if I'm gonna sit here and make sure the county goes in the hole too. I fixed a problem at the city years ago, hoping it would never repeat. We had a good thing going for years. And now we have the people that say, "Here's the facts," laughing about that, because they don't like facts. They like to make up things to fool the public and then say, "Oh, I can fix it again if we just build another thousand houses." Mr. Chair, I would say what we should be doing is moving towards getting a proposal from CAL FIRE or creating our own fire department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor Zenger. Do you want to go?
Sure. All right. Yeah, lots been said, lots been said. At the end of the day, I just don't see how this works out math-wise. If the city is requesting that we, according to the way they're looking at things, stop subsidizing them, and they want the, you know, whatever, everything they've asked for, the no browning out, the minimum three, everything. I don't know how this makes any sense. We don't have the money for that. I don't really understand how this would work. We can talk back and forth, but at the end of the day, if it's not gonna work out, it's not gonna work out. So I don't really know how to proceed forward as far as that negotiation would go, because we already, I guess as a board, unanimously had decided sort of what we could do and what we couldn't do. And if the city's asking for so much more from us, I don't understand how that would ever work out. So I'm not sure if we need to just continue negotiations. And I don't know how we're gonna be able to pull millions of dollars out of a hat and figure out how to make that work. I don't know where we would get that money. This is, like I said a few meetings ago, and like was just alluded to, we're going to take from the sheriff's office. We're going to take from other departments. Just the end of the day, we're just gonna have to take from someone else and give to here. And we could shuffle around money like that all day, but it doesn't make more money. It's not gonna work. We're going to have to take it from somewhere. So I don't know if we need to go back, take a step back, and fully explore all of our options, including CAL FIRE, standing up our own department. I am open to those things. We talked about those things months ago with our consultants, and we had some presentations on those things. And I think it's worth exploring all the options at this point, because simply going to the city and saying, "Oh, you know, here's $3 million. We'll figure it out," isn't gonna work. So I think we do need to explore, whether it's CAL FIRE, whether it's our own department, something like that, I would definitely be open to. And if someone can convince me that we can somehow find millions of dollars to give to the city, I would be open to hearing that, but I don't know where that would come from other than cutting other public safety. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor. I just want to clarify a few things. The city manager and the CAO were involved in negotiations. There were initial conversations, very preliminary conversations, setting parameters for what we're discussing between the two ad hocs. But the city manager and interim CAO Ring were very much involved in the negotiations. And if anybody has any questions, I certainly would invite them to ask Dave Marioni, whether he was involved or Henny, if they were involved with dollar amounts and the discussions that led to where we got, because they were. And then just another, just clarifying, the board did not approve a contract amendment reducing minimum staffing from three to two. The contract, as I stated last week, and the amendment, the current contract, going back to where this began, including the last contract that started in 2019, called for minimum staffing of two. The only amendment that the county added to the contract was increasing the contribution by $1.1 million, plus hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees, when you consider that we took out the browning out stipulation in the contract. And I do want to clarify, you know, there's a lot of just, there are statements that are made, you know, that are very broad, that are just not true, like that we disrespect firefighters. I have never disrespected a firefighter. There's never once been one thing out of my mouth that's been disrespectful toward any of our firefighters. In fact, it's In fact, it's consistently been the opposite. And then lastly, to clarify about, I think it's really important when you look at dollar amounts, and there are a lot of dollar amounts. I understand that, you know, scrutinizing Prop 172, those are public safety dollars, and I think we'll do further scrutiny of that. But when it comes to throwing around, you know, that we have reserve dollars, and that, and there's this insinuation that we should use general fund reserve dollars on annual operating, ongoing expenses, it is, it is blatantly irresponsible. It is government 101 to not do that. So I've heard talk about, you know, there's two five millions, we have a five million for Prop 172, and then there was the $5 million in reserves that we had, that we should, we should just start spending all that down. And within a couple of years, that money's going to be gone, our very limited reserves. We do not have a healthy reserve account at the county. We actually have a very modest reserve. And it's, the reserves are meant for emergencies and for one-time expenses. When you, when you build up reserves to a point where they're considered healthy, there's a balance there, but they're, they're supposed to be used for one-time expenses, or in case of emergencies, one-time expense emergencies, not operational expenses that go on in perpetuity. Because if you commit whatever X million dollars in additional dollars toward fire services, it's not just for this year or next year. We have to assume that that's going forward essentially forever. Even with the fire district, I think there's been a broad understanding that if there's a fire district, that the jurisdictions would all commit the dollar amount that they're currently spending on fire services toward the district as a baseline, and then there would potentially be other options for adding to that through the district mechanisms like a potential parcel tax or other alternatives that would be under study. But what I'm getting at is it's, it is, you don't use reserves for one, we would love to use reserves for one-time expenses. Eventually, the money runs out, and in this case, it would run out very quickly, and then we would have to still make cuts and still eliminate and lay off people. The biggest thing here is, you know, first of all, I've been consistent on, you know, this fiscal path that we're, that we're on for fire services in our county, in our relatively resource poor county, is, is just simply unsustainable. It's, we all have to address the problem. We can't just continue on this path and ignore the direction where we're going with this. And that's why I also do understand, it, it's frustrating what's happened in the last week. I'm disappointed frankly in what's happened. At the end of the day, I understand that we're all dealing with financial challenges in this matter, and we all have to make decisions that are, are financially as responsible as we can, while trying to maintain the best public safety services as we can. And the county, I don't, you know, it's, the county doesn't have a fire protection problem, we have a math problem primarily. And it would be great if we could afford three firefighters per engine. I don't know who would be against that if we had the money for it. If we could afford four, if we could have ALS on every engine, it would be great if we could have limitless dollars to spend on public safety and all these other essential services, but in the end, we just don't. And the fire department's budget is 16.3 million dollars, last I heard, and it's climbing fast. It is climbing fast. It has gone from, and if we stay on this pace, it is going to keep climbing at a very rapid pace. So we can't afford it now. Can you imagine how badly we could not afford it in a few years if we continue on this path? And, you know, uh, you know, something has to give, something has to give. And all I've heard in the last, you know, very frustrating week, is that we're not, there's not a willingness from the folks that have opposed where we were at. I thought we were in a good spot, frankly. The county and the City of Hollister came to agreement. City of San Juan and Hollister previously negotiated independently of the county, they had an agreement. The Hollister did go back to San Juan and proposed reducing minimum staffing from three to two in light of this immense challenge that we're all facing. And as we all know, San Juan Batista rejected what is a, what, yes, it was reducing from three to two, but I think everybody knows that, that everybody that knows the numbers, just looking at the numbers simply, that San Juan was getting the deal of the century. They were getting the deal of the century, and I support that deal. I so, I want to, whatever fire services San Juan and this community can afford, I fully support it. But San Juan was getting an amazing deal. They were paying $260,000 a year for nine firefighters. That's three per engine, three shifts, nine firefighters. They were paying for less than one firefighter, for nine firefighters. And they were being asked to pay $400,000, rising to $500,000 for six firefighters. The average firefighter is somewhere between 200, right now, is between 250,000 and 300,000. I'm just stating the math. We were all willing to work together. We all had, you know, if the City of Hollister and San Juan County had what we all agreed was a fair deal, yes, there was going to be some, some pain, because again, we have to address the challenge. So we were looking at reducing staffing at the county station from three to two, which is in the contract, was two. But the City of Hollister said, we're actually going to have to follow your contract this time around. And, and again, San Juan was being asked to, to basically pay for two per shift or six firefighters for a very, 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 very reasonable cost. Even when you, even when you consider the fact that a lot of those calls from the San Juan station go into the county. In the end, you have a fully functioning fire station in a town of 2, 2200 people, with a, a city that has an entire budget of 1.5 million dollars, that's being provided personnel costs of about 2.5 million dollars, and is unwilling to pay $400,000, up to $500,000 for those costs. I'm disappointed, because that is really why we're here today. That is really why we're here today. San Juan, the, the chain of events was San Juan Batista rejected the contract, the county agreed to our end of the contract, and Hollister said, you know what? We're so fed up with this, you guys go figure it out on your own. And it just blew up the whole thing. So I'm very frustrated as to why we're here today, but the demands that are being put on the table, that are being requested of this county, we simply just can't do it. We just can't do it. We, we've got to find another direction here at this point. And we can't waste time, because we have a 270-day clock that has started again, unfortunately. And the clock is ticking. So, so here we are, we have to find a path that's financially affordable and sustainable for the long term. And I think we do have to look at, I think we do have to look at all options at this point, you know, considering the 270-day notice, how long it takes, because of the risk involved here. You know, we've been going on and on for over a year on this thing, and now we have 270 days again. And the risk involved is that we don't have fire services at some point. So it is our obligation to look at other options. And, and so I, I am, I am firmly of the belief at this point, considering the decisions that, the very bad decisions that have been made in the last week, that we're going to have to look at creating our own fire department or having further discussions with CAL FIRE in regard to what that might look like. And that's all I have to say for now, and if I, I would be glad to hear further discussion. Go ahead Supervisor.
I just want to say, I think you covered it well, and it's unfortunate, because we did have a partnership that I thought worked pretty well for quite a while. But at the end of the day, it's a partnership. If your partners are not involved, you can't move on. You just can't. It's just too hard to do. So I, again, I would recommend that this board move forward on having a conversation with CAL FIRE and starting to look at creating our own fire department. If we can agendaize that for another meeting, I appreciate that.
Supervisor Curl?
So I've met with CAL FIRE. Several of us have individually met with CAL FIRE. They're moving towards four on an engine. The state is putting requirements on them that are going to be so costly, I don't see how it's going to behoove us to put our money towards CAL FIRE contract or creating a new fire, funding our own fire station. And I'm assuming we're looking at one station for the entire county? Is that what we're looking at?
It's, go ahead Supervisor. We'd have to figure this out, figure out our cost and what we can do. And that's just part of what the process is. We have eight months, nearly nine months to do it in, and we have to get working.
So instead of going back to the table with the two ad hocks and meeting with them and coming up with maybe a potential compromise that would allow us to contribute enough to be sustaining the three per engine, which, when you talk about responses to South County, and I mean, we've done the response time scenario, we've done the call scenario, and we're looking at a, a potential fire district, which I think you said it Supervisor Cosmicke, the bottom line is, is if we increase our contributions to fire, when a, when a special district is formed, the potential impact on the county is that we will have to pay that longer service and that cost in perpetuity to a special district, which I understand we don't have the resources that we wish we had. But prioritizing fire protection and law enforcement is our primary, you know, kind of role in government. Can we find ways of cutting our costs to be able to fund fire? Why weren't we during this incredible period of time with this negotiation that we were only paying 2 point whatever million, and then an accelerator, which I can't even remember what the percentage was, it was a very small amount per year? Did we think that this problem wasn't going to come back? Because it doesn't appear we've put any money away looking at the future of what fire costs, especially with all the fires that have happened across the state of California, that we're not seeing how that's going to impact us. I, I have no problem with recommending that we look and negotiate with CAL FIRE. I don't think you're going to see the outcome that you're hopeful for. Creating a fire house, yeah, it probably would be about the same price. We could, we could do that, if, if that's the route you guys want to go. I think the collaboration between the cities and the county are the most important to be able to keep services at the levels that we're at and not reduce services. And that's my focus, is maintaining the service levels that we have now. And that's really all I have to say.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah. Well, I would just say, I thought, sort of already had this conversation before negotiations the first time. And so I don't really, like I said in my earlier comments, I don't, I don't really understand where there is to go with this. I don't really understand what else we're supposed to, I mean, we've, we've done this already, so I don't really understand how anything has changed. I don't understand where, unless I miss, unless people have changed their minds or something, but at the end of the day, we only have so much money. So I, I don't really understand, I guess I don't really understand, Supervisor Curl, I don't really understand the, the intent.
Okay, so here's where I'm coming from. I never intended to reduce services when we said that we gave a number to go and start the conversation. The conversation was to get the 270 off the table. The, the discussion of ranges was a beginning conversation that we've only had once in closed session. We've never had another meeting after that saying, how did negotiations go? What do you see as the obstacles? How, the only way the ad hoc is going to recommend something to the board is if we do reduction in services. If I had had that conversation, I would have been very much supportive of a new negotiation level. Because how can we sit up here and say, we're, we're not going, we're going to reduce services? That was where I got thrown. Is the, the brownout and going, yes, the contract said two, but we knew we were getting three. And if we're getting three, we should be paying for that share. Now, I also will agree, the increase in fire cost right now has been way too fast, and we weren't included in those conversations. I don't want to go backwards and bash why we got to this point, but here's where we're at right now, and the cost that we have has got, we, we can't keep increasing the cost. Because if we're in a, if we're in this right now and we're at 16 or 17 million, I can tell you right now, we can't sustain that as a county. I know we can't to keep increasing that. But if there's a way that we can come to an agreement of what we can afford and what we can contribute that will help support the City of Hollister, then I'm open to that conversation. But it sounds like you guys want to completely separate from that and start talking to CAL FIRE and, and create our own fire protection, which we, is where we used to be, and it didn't go very well back then. So, and CAL FIRE, I, I mean, I would love to have a negotiation with CAL FIRE where we could get the level that we have now and, and collaborate with South County, getting more of a 24-hour, set 365-day-a-year service down there, but I, I just don't see that that's in the cards of what we can afford.
Oh, go ahead Supervisor.
I just want to go back, and this is, again, it's, it gets frustrating to hear information turn. It was extremely clear that our contract was two firefighters, and it was extremely clear that we wanted to stay on that path, because we could not afford anything more. All five here agreed with that. So it's frustrating for me when I started hearing different stories about, well, I didn't know what was going to be, no, no, no. Let's be clear. This is factual. Everyone clearly understood the number. Everyone clearly understood how much funding we have and how we couldn't even really get to the point we got to. Again, I'm not blaming City of Hollister. It's frustrating. It's frustrating. But these things don't work if you don't have that partnership to make it work all the way around. And I can understand their, their point, but we got to move on. We got to move on. We don't have a lot of time to do something. We get, we should get a proposal from CAL FIRE. We don't know what that number looks like. Or we move on to our own fire department. We got to move on. I don't have this, sit back down and have more conversations so then publicly misinformation go back out again. I'm done with that. Everything was transparent here. Nothing was hidden, even though we were blamed over and over of lack of transparency. But it was transparent. Might not like it, but it was. And we need to move forward.
Supervisor, Supervisor Tello?
Thank you. If you guys want to look at this CAL FIRE and starting our own, I feel like we've gone down this, it wasn't feasible then. I feel like right now, what we're suggesting is kind of scare tactics. I don't think this is good leadership. I don't think that it was transparent. I don't think we were real clear on all the terms of the contract. We did not discuss it as a board, what all the terms were going to be. I think part of the negotiation that I assumed, I can't speak for anybody else on this board, was that you guys were going to go and start that conversation. We talked a little bit about money, but we didn't know it was a beginning of the conversation. It wasn't to come back. So I appreciate that that's how you saw it. I didn't see it that way, right? And so I'm not being deceitful, I am not being, playing a political game, I am not putting out misinformation. This is how I saw it. And I think it's going to take all of us. I really truly believe that we need to be the adults here, we need to go back to the table, and we need to work hard. If you guys don't want to sit on the ad hoc and do that, I am happy to sit on an ad hoc and work with members of both cities and do whatever we can to come up with a solution. I just, I don't think giving up and throwing in the towel and, and using these scare tactics is, is right for our community. I want to work together as a board and with the three jurisdictions. It's a hard decision, but we have a responsibility to this community to do it. And so I get funding is hard, but we've got to dig deep. So I'd like to see us go forward with negotiations.
Yeah. Supervisor?
Yeah. I understand, I understand the comment. I also don't think it's good leadership though to go to the city and say, we'll do whatever you want, we'll gut our sheriff's office, here's, here's all the money you're asking for. And so I don't, I don't understand how at the same point, we're just going to...
Can we please, in the audience, just please not disrupt? Thank you. Can we please, in the audience, just please not disrupt? Thank you.
All right. I don't understand this, this idea that we're just going to be able to, to come up with money when we don't have it. So I, I just don't understand the, I don't know if we're, if we're, I don't want to lead the community on that we're going to be able to magically come up with this money. And I don't, I just don't know how we're going to. So I don't understand, I don't understand how those conversations would even be fruitful at this point personally.
I, I would just add that, you know, why I'm frustrated especially is that we had a deal on the table. We had an agreement. Everything was, I thought we were headed toward an agreement that we all had, all three jurisdictions. It was, it went back to San Juan and they unfortunately triggered this chain of events by rejecting a really, really great deal for San Juan. And I represent San Juan. And all you have to do is look at the math that I laid out earlier. And that's why we're here today. And I'd be glad to, you know, I'd be glad to put back on the table the agreed upon terms that the city of Hollister voted on and agreed to. That the ad hoc voted on, that was the, the board that was based on the ad hoc's terms. There was no discussion about changing the contract and increasing the contract staffing from two to three. There was never any discussion about that. The, the ad hoc did exactly what it was asked to do. The process was smooth until last week. And we brought back the terms that we all agreed to. And unfortunately, we're in this situation because folks have changed their minds. And, and San Juan again rejected an amazing deal for San Juan. And so I'd be glad to talk about the agreement that was on the table, that Hollister's city council supported, that this, the majority of this county board supported. I'd be glad to talk about that. But other than that, we have 270 days to find an alternative solution. And we, and it's absolutely our obligation and responsibility to start working on that alternative solution. Because if we don't, this is going to be a calamity. This is going to be a calamity. And so, yeah, I, I don't really believe we have any other choice than to give direction to staff to, to, to look at creating a county fire department and, and again, exploring those options with CAL FIRE regarding options that there may be for contracting, whether that be a CAL FIRE station of its own or having CAL FIRE act in some sort of, you know, ancillary fashion for the county with, with the county fire station. Anything further? Anything further? I'm just entertained. A motion for direction?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I asked that we agendaize, put, maybe putting together ad hoc to look into the possibly working with CAL FIRE, creating our own fire department on the next agenda and start giving direction for us to go in that direction.
Second? You have a second? All those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Zenger, District One?
Yes.
Super, District Two Supervisor Cosmicke?
Yes.
District Three Supervisor Satello?
No.
District Four Supervisor Curro?
No.
District Five Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
That is a three-two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will, so that brings our only item to a close and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.